We're going to get going. We're going to start the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Connell.
Here.
Commissioner Tamian. Mr. Hydeman. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatham.
Here.
Chairman Bone.
Here. Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. Seeing none, do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Supported.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item five, minutes of previous meetings, A and B.
That one's mine.
I have a motion somewhere.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve and file the minutes of 12:14 to 17, Commissioners' meeting and the 1:04 of 18 Standing Committee meetings.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? No proclamations, consent agendas, items A through G.
I would move to approve items seven, A through G on the consent agenda items.
Support.
Support.
Discussion on anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item eight. Greg, start with your reports of standing special committees.
I'm good right now, thanks.
Commissioner Greatham.
Take a pass tonight, sir.
Mr. Rushing.
Oh, a 20-second here. Went to the Park and Rec meeting on Wednesday. Just a trivia question, and how many buildings do we have on our five parks?
Give us three. Give us three choices.
I guess 62 and 59. We have 59 buildings on some. Just a little trivia, that's it.
All right. Are you going to share your being an ordained minister with everybody?
I became an ordained minister today.
There you go. Going to do some weddings and stuff?
Do all kinds of marriages?
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Pass.
I'm going to take a pass also. Citizens wishing to address the board. Susan Atwater, 413 Botzford, board here in the Five Freedoms. That's the yellow piece of...
Though originally written to address welfare concerns in agricultural settings, the Five Freedoms are now accepted as guidelines for the welfare of all animals, a model that is acceptable across species and situations. The first one is freedom from hunger and thirst. The second is freedom from any discomfort. The third is freedom from pain, injury, or disease. The fourth is freedom to express their need or concern for injury or disease. And the fifth is freedom from fear and distress. Ensuring animal welfare is a human responsibility that includes consideration for all aspects of animal well-being, including proper housing, management, nutrition, disease prevention, and treatment, responsible care, humane handling, and when necessary, humane euthanasia. There are numerous perspectives in animal welfare that are influenced by a person's values and experiences. There are also various means of measuring animal welfare, including but not limited to their health, productivity, behavior, and psychological responses. There's an article that was written called Conscious of Questions. In 2002, Matthew Scully wrote Dominion: The Power of Man, the Suffering of Animals, and the Call to Mercy, which explores the obligations humans have to protect animals. To quote Scully, "The care of human beings with its often complicated problems of economic, ecology, and science." But above all, it confronts us with questions of conscience. Many of us seem to have lost all sense of restraint towards animals and understanding of natural boundaries, a respect for them as beings with needs and wants and a place and purpose of their own. Too often, too casually, we assume that our interests come first, and if it's profitable or expedient, that's all that we need to know. We assume that all these other creatures with whom we share the earth with are here for us and only us. We assume in effect that we are everything and they are nothing. The St. Clair County Advocates, we will remain committed to seeing all these changes right on through. We will be here until best practices are in place and the animals have the opportunities for daily enrichment in a variety of ways, ways that will increase successful adoptions and improve shelter policies and procedures that include an enthusiastic management team eager to embrace the improvement opportunities versus feeling pressured to do so. No matter what the final model ends up being, we will be here until the end. Thank you.
Brian Reed, 1305 Range Road, Kimball, Michigan. The Woodrow Right-of-Way held by St. Clair County.
I'm here tonight to ask for some help. I've been to everybody. Nobody wants to stop these two people behind me that's blocking the right-of-way because it's not brought up to county grade. Kurt Weston doesn't want to do anything. I've been hit with a brick. He's been brought up on assault charges. Their names are Jeffrey Chartran and Karen Streeter at 1377 Woodrow. This is a right-of-way held by the St. Clair County. Nobody wants to enforce the right-of-way, the use of it. So I'm looking at that it... I asked them, "Then give me my property back." They won't because then they land-lock everybody. Well, then enforce the right-of-way and write the guy a letter, stop him. That's why I'm here tonight to ask if you could write him a letter, come out, check up on it. He just... I just called the sheriff on him on 12:04:17 because he put four-by-fours back there, boards back there again. Sheriff did nothing like always. They've been called about 50 times. I go back there, I told him, "Well, I'm removing them." So I did. Again, I go back there, this is the second time, the board has nails through it. So I throw it in the woods. Nobody's confronted me yet, but I'm tired of the guy's crap. I bought the property behind me because it was an open right-of-way. It was surveyed on my surveillance as an open right-of-way, a dirt road, but because it's not brought to county grade. I used to maintain it. The sheriff asked me last year to back off, so I did. That would keep him away. Well, he's right back again this year... Well, last year started his crap again, and I'm not going to put up with it. I used to road. The people behind me in a trailer use it, and it's got to stop. One way or another, it's going to stop. But I'm here tonight to ask if I can get some help because nobody wants to do their job and enforce the right-of-way. And the right-of-way was meant for a road. It was plotted back in the '60s as a trailer park. It fell through. They allowed a trailer to be built, two trailers to be built back there, so they didn't close the roads down and give it back to the people. So that's where I stand with all this, and like I said, I'm asking for some help because I'm getting tired of this.
Come see me after the meeting. I just want to get some more information if you don't mind.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sherry McCollman, 3707 Ferndale Drive, Burtville, Michigan. S-C-C-S-A-C. S-C-C-S-A-C. Mistake.
Hi there. I've spoken to you guys before, and normally when I speak to you, I'm rather emotional. Well, it's happened again, and this time it was to my own family. Last evening, well, start out, a couple months ago, my niece and nephew-in-law adopted a dog from our shelter. So proud of him. My nephew-in-law was military, and he had an emotional support dog, and it's getting older, so they needed another dog, and they thought this would be a great way to make Aunt Sherry proud. Well, last night, you know, there's adjustment periods. They have a couple of dogs. They adopted this new dog, Sammy, and he... Last night, there was a little tussle over a toy. Well, the one dog is overly protective of my niece that wasn't involved, ran out. There was some biting that went on. My nephew got a little worried, called the paramedics. They checked it all out, and my niece, she's going to be okay, but because there was a dog bite, the police were called, and the dog had to be put in a 10-day quarantine. No problem. County law, no problem. They agreed to it. They talked to animal control officer. They were told, "You can, you know, sign it over. We'll take it tonight." Were told some things that they needed to do so the dog could end up quarantined back in their own house. No problem. They were on the ball. My niece didn't sleep at all. She was so upset, you know? They fell in love with this pup. Cutest thing. It's a lab mix and perfect for a support animal. Well, they called the shelter to make an appointment to go pick him up. Well, guess what? It seems things got crossed again, and the line was that there was a breakdown in communication again, and Max was mistakenly put down. Now, the pound, I admit, they're trying to right their wrong, which is great. I'm all for it. They've sent Max out to be cremated. Now, how about you? Can you get emotional support from a box of ashes? Or would you rather have that dog? So once again, because of misinformation, breakdown, et cetera, it's happened again, and it keeps happening. I can tell you story after story after story. We keep hearing them. People keep approaching us. This is my own niece. What are you people going to do? My nephew needs this dog. They were so excited, and now they're devastated. I'm picking up the pieces, and I feel so bad because I'm like, "Go to the shelter. Help us out." Now, the dog we knew didn't have rabies. As soon as they got it from the shelter, they went straight to the vet, made sure it got all its shots. It was a puppy. Puppies do things. My nephew was right to make the call. There were concerns. It turned out they weren't as bad as it seemed, you know? But for this mistake to keep happening, and like I said, thank you for, you know, doing the right thing and having the dog cremated, but I don't know about you, but if anything, that box of ashes every time I go visit is going to rip my heart out, and I'm sure it's going to be really hard on them, too. And now they're not sure if they will adopt another one because of what has happened, and my nephew dearly needs that. So please, you know, can't we do something? I'm tired of this excuse over and over and over and over again. It's the same excuse. It's... We've got... And the line was, and here's the line...
I need you to wrap it up.
Yep. The line is, "A new process was put in place so that this does not happen again." It's the same line of BS we keep hearing over and over again. So come on. Get the processes in place. Do something, please. Help Aunt.
Shavana Hernandez, 4836 Westwood Drive, Sheriff Animal Control.
Hi, gentlemen and ladies. I handed you today the Five Freedoms of Companion Animals, and I want you to concentrate on that dark line that's run through the bottom of that neon green... That neon green line. St. Clair County Sheriff Animal Control does not meet the basic requirements. That is probably one of the most upsetting stories I've heard in a long time, and I'm going to tell you exactly how to fix this and to follow these five processes, is get a director in there. Now that this RFP has not went through, you guys tried, we appreciate that, but change still has to come. This is not going to just sit still. We're not going to be passive and just sit here and wait. This has to happen. These kind of mistakes just continue to happen because you have an office manager in that place who is not capable of doing her job. I don't care. She's been in there long enough where she should be an expert at that. Those kind of mistakes should not happen. Stephanie Ignish needs to be moved away, and you guys need to enforce getting a director in there who is actually compassionate, caring, and understanding and knows the position. St. Clair County deserves this. Freedom from hunger and thirst. Have you guys seen the animals come out of there? The dogs, the cats? Underweight? Malnourished? I mean, it's not stopping. The volunteers are wonderful, yes, but nothing else has changed. They can sit there and do a PR campaign all they want. We out there on the streets, the community, knows, and this is not going to stop. I lead the Standing for Change Against Animal Control and the protest. Over time, if I have to, just like I said before, door to door to make sure that this is fully aware, we have sat here and asked you guys. That should never happen. Yes, mistakes happen, but that is a level of incompetence that is unacceptable. This county deserves somebody qualified for their job, not an over glorified office manager. I am not going away. The protesters are not going away. That's all there is to that. If you guys would like to continue this, that's fine. Continue to, you know, just try to do your best, but I know you have the capability of doing your best for this county. I believe in this county, and the one thing I can say we all agree on is that we love our homes. We love our county. This is a beautiful community. We deserve better than what that office manager and the sheriff is giving us there. The $470-something thousand budget is larger than any other in so many that do so much more. In 2011, $60-something thousand was profited into the county from the dog license loan, and that was in 2011, and it's grown.
If you could wrap it up, please.
And they're saying they don't have enough money or help. Let the volunteers in there do the jobs. Get the inmates out of there. Get an office director or an office manager out of there and an actual director who's qualified and educated in there because this has to stop. That is appalling. Thank you guys for listening.
So unfinished business. I'm just going to touch on this now before the administrators' report. So everybody's probably aware in the audience, the commissioners went to multiple facilities, looked at a bunch of them. Our facility is not a rat hole by any stretch compared to the other ones that we toured. Went to Lepire, went to McComb. We went to the one down. I've probably been to five or six. We went and met with Flint, so on and so forth. So we went and we went out for RFPs just because we received some different respondents, okay? Our administrators currently in the process of working with two of the RFP impossibilities. Just because they didn't say that they were going to take over that particular day does not mean that we have not been engaged with them and are continuing to move forward. I don't think that, you know, some of these issues, it doesn't fall on deaf ears up here, okay? We're trying to work, we're trying to do the right thing, but if we're going to hand the keys over to this thing to somebody, we want to make darn sure that we're handing them over to the right person because if we don't, guess what? Everybody's going to be back here again. They're going to be screaming again, and we probably will have no control over it at that time, you know, depending on the direction we go. But you just want to... You want to touch base, I guess, a little bit on some of the stuff?
Yeah, sure. We did not receive any formal bids from the RFP we went out. However, we had two respondents that issued a letter of a no bid that basically said that they were not interested at this time, but, you know, possibly in the future. So I did reach out to both of those groups just to see what their timing would be, you know? Are you interested in taking over in five years and one year? You know, is there stuff we can do? There is one group that is interested, and you know, their timeframe really, they weren't ready to take over today, but they would be ready to take over within the next, you know, six months possibly. So I do have a follow-up meeting next week with them. We are going to be sitting down and, you know, just going over the concepts to see if there is a real interest and if we could possibly have an agreement to bring forward to the board.
Okay. You have any questions for Carrie on that at all, guys?
No. I know exactly what they're doing.
Okay. We're going to move on to item A, new business, approval of county dispersments for November 2017.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the county dispersments for November 2017 in the amount of $14,374,018.32.
Support. Discussion on anything? Roll call. Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Affirmative.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item B, approval of county dispersments for December of 17.
I make a motion to approve the county dispersments for December 2017 in the amount of $13,622,069.17.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Definitely.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes. Item C, the Blue Water Community Action update. For those of you, do your introductions, but I'm going to give Mr. Beeden a cheap plug. Mr. Beeden is the manager of the Sperry's Movie House downtown Port Huron. If you have not gotten an opportunity, go see it. It's a pretty awesome place, too, watch a show.
Very awesome. Thank you, Jeff.
I fell asleep in your movies one night.
(laughing). Big reply.
Such a good... Come back by another ticket.
And dinner's pretty good there, too. More importantly, he's my board chair at my Board of Directors. I'm Melinda Johnson from Blue Water Community Action, and Mr. Dunn is your representative on my Board of Directors. Community action agencies have been around since the... For over 50 years now. There's one that covers every county or parish in the country, and we have a unique board makeup where one-third of our board has to be elected officials or they're designees. And so the county commissioners, for as long as I've been around, which has been for over 30 years, have had a seat at our board for that entire time. So right now, that person is Mr. Dunn, which I appreciate, and who helped facilitate us coming to the meeting tonight. So in your packet that you received, you have a couple of items. This is our program services because I wanted to make sure that you guys knew who we were before I told you about our exciting news. Well, you probably know about it. It's been in the newspaper, but we've been around for 50 years. We get our money from the federal government, state government, local. We have United Way funds. We're a United Way member agency. Our largest program or division is our early childhood program, and we have 326 children ages three to five that we provide preschool services to throughout the county, and we also service 114 pregnant women. Five or six of those are pregnant women, and the rest are infants and toddlers up to the age of three. All of those are served through a home visitation program, except for eight that we serve currently down at the Anchor Bay High School so that we can help the students down there stay in school. Not only do we provide the early childhood programming in the classrooms and the child development activities, but we provide a lot of services for the parents. We provide parenting classes, relationship and communication skill classes, and my favorite is a curriculum called Getting Ahead and a Just Getting By World where we teach our families what poverty is, what creates poverty, and how to take steps to move out of poverty or move towards social or economic self-sufficiency more than they have currently, and we've had real good success with that. In addition to that, we offer just lots of other programs. All of our programs are focused on people who have low income in our community. We have financial literacy classes that we offer. Our current one that we're offering is the Dave Ramsey class, for those of you who might be familiar with that. We have a youth financial literacy program where we're providing eight hours of financial literacy education to youth 14 to 18, and we've had really great feedback on that. We have donations that we get from banks and others so that we can have them. When they complete the class, they get to go open up a savings account with a $50 deposit. So we enjoy that one a lot. We do a food distribution quarterly for low-income in our county out of the Armory right now. In December, we serviced over 1,900 families in six hours at our distribution. We also monthly do a senior distribution also at the Armory. For those folks who have recently signed up for Medicaid, we serve five counties and help them make their plan selection based on the doctors that they serve. We provide homebuyer education. That's on the uprise. That's great for the county. For closure prevention classes are on the downslide, so just good news for that. We help weatherize folks' homes throughout the county, and we operate the subcontract, the CDBG for the county, and we work closely with David Struck. We have a protective payee program. We're the only one in the country, the only community action agency that operates a protective payee program. We have approximately 200 people that we provide services where we handle their money and make sure that their rent gets paid and their utilities are paid and that kind of thing so that they stay where they're at. We work closely with the Social Security Office for most of those clients. And then a couple years ago, we took over the Backpack Program from the Women's Initiative at the Community Foundation. In the Port Huron area, we have seven locations where we house Head Start programs, and every year we have to move one or two. We're constantly closing and opening classrooms, and it costs us a lot of money. Licensing regulations have changed immensely in the last 30 years, and it's very expensive to meet all of the regulations, and every year we're moving. We're in churches, we're in schools, we're in various places, and people need it, or I need to expand, or whatever the case may be, we're moving every year. At our main office, which is just kitty corner from here, we're on the second floor of the ICE museum. We have just reached maximum capacity because effective February 1st, we're taking on the HARA program. So we'll be doing the Housing Assessment Resource Agency, which is working with the homeless people in our community, and I can't fit any more staff, so I can't expand anymore or do any other programming right now. So we've been looking for, what, four or five years? Four or five years, we've been looking for a building. We've looked at buildings all over the place. We have certain constraints. We need to be on a bus route. Many of our clients come via bus or they walk, so we need to be where the higher-density population is. And we came upon Baker College complex for sale. So we made an offer last summer, and we are in the process of purchasing that property. We are hoping to close by the end of this quarter. We are working on getting a loan from the USDA. My last 30 years of being in this field, we're practice in bureaucracy for this. There's a lot of stuff to get a USDA loan, so it's been really fun doing that. Once we move there, we'll be able to take the seven locations that are in the greater Port Huron area, and we'll have 14 Head Start classrooms that will be moving into the building along with our main office. We'll also be able to open one or two early Head Start classrooms, which we haven't had for about three or four years in this area because we haven't had a location to open those up. We'll be able to expand our two-generation programming. Right now, that's where our parents and children can be taking classes at the same time, and right now, we don't have place at all of our facilities where we can offer that, and so it makes it very difficult for us to expand our parenting classes and our communication classes and our Getting Ahead classes and all the other things that we want to do. Our later phase, hopefully not too long, we also are going to be adding a kitchen, a commercial kitchen, to the facility. Right now, we get all of our food for our children through a contract with Council on Aging, which is wonderful, but we'd like to operate our own kitchen so that we can offer cooking classes to our families. We found that to be a great need. And we can provide varied menus, which we're limited on that right now, and we only need it four days a week for the most part for breakfast and lunch, which means afternoons, Fridays, weekends, and all summer long, the kitchen would be empty. So it is our intent to open up a kitchen incubator as well and hopefully work closely with the incubator that's housed at Sperry's. So we're very excited about that as well. So right now, we're working with Bill Vogon. He was selected at our last board meeting as our architect to get our drawings completed so we can get those into USDA and approved. Once those are approved, we can put the bid packets out to get a contractor. Once the contractor is selected, then we notify USDA and all the paperwork's done and everything closed, we can close on the building. We can't close until all the steps are done and the contractor is ready to go, basically within 48 hours of closing on the building. You have any questions? Want to add anything?
No, I do... Yeah, I guess I do. As chair, it's always frustrating to come to a meeting and understand that certain times of the year that we're getting bounced out of a facility, or the church has grown and they need their Sunday School classes back, or... And every time we go in, we're pulling money out of our budget that I really feel needs to go towards the kids, not brick and mortar and doors and fire requirements that the fire marshals will require. So some of the frustrations over the years have been for me to sit as a chair and observe what we spend to try and rehab a certain school or a church. Having a main campus, a feel like that, being off a second story and on a main floor, main thoroughfare, gives us a presence, and I think, as Melinda has listed, the things that we do, it's a very, very active community action, and their hands are in a lot of different things, and I just feel like we shouldn't be up in a silo, and this will afford us to get on a main thoroughfare and have some exposure. It is with a bus route. We're excited to talk about kitchen incubators and different things that we can do. The property affords collaboration with other agencies within the community. The property affords, collaboration with other agencies within the community, so we're always open to that type of thing, too, as we move this project forward and bring the headquarters out to Lapeer Avenue.
So how much, because Melinda, you and I, we, you know, met before previously, how much space out of that Baker College? Baker is staying out there, and they're going to continue to rent a portion of the building. Correct me if I'm wrong?
Yes.
You're gonna take a portion, and you have additional available space of...
Between what Baker will be renting, and we also have Community Mental Health went in there last fall, and they're renting a space in the West Building. The Baker complex is actually three separate buildings that are connected. So in the West Building, Community Mental Health is operating their ABA program in half of that building. Until we close on the building and we get the USDA loan, we can only have what Baker College and CMH is now renting.
Is my question, are you gonna have leftover space once you close on the building?
We may, yes. Yes. And then we know, in Baker College, we have a temporary contract with number eighteen.
Do you have any idea, you got five thousand, ten? Because we're always on the street, and that's what I'm saying, just to try to get in.
There's gonna be probably close to ten.
Okay. Just for personal knowledge, if somebody asks, we can say, you know, go talk to those guys over there.
I think once we get in there and we kind of know the land for working with Baker College and how long they're going to be there and how much they're going to need, that may shift, too. That may change over time. We'll definitely be making sure folks know what we have available for renting.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys, for coming.
Item E, the contract approval request for the West... I'm sorry. Oh, D, Community Mental Health Board appointments.
This time I'd like to move to appoint Mark Paulus, Member-at-Large, and Michael Smith, Member-at-Large to the Community Mental Health Board, each for the remainder of a three-year term expiring March 31st of 2020.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Now, item E, contract approval request for the Westlaw. Mr. Ruters.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the subscription agreement with Westlaw Thompson Reuters for a term of 1/118 through 12/3120 in the amount of sixty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Support.
Support.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitout.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
All right.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Contract approval for the Waden Enterprises.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the renewal of the building rental agreement with Waden Enterprises LLC for a term of January 1st, 2018, through December 31st, 2018, in the amount of forty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitout.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item G, the Macomb County Juvenile Detention Agreement.
I move to approve the agreement with Macomb County for juvenile detention services for a term of 1/118 through 12/3118.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitout.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
The Ottawa County Juvenile Detention Center.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to move to approve the Ottawa County Juvenile Detention Center bed rental agreement for a term of October 1st, 2017, through September 30th, 2020.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitout.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item M, the revised childcare budget.
This time, I'd move to approve the revised childcare budget for October 1st, 2017, through September 30th, 2018, in the amount of six million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-six cents.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greitout.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item J, the sheriff contract for police services with Charter Township of China.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the law enforcement service agreement with the Charter Township of China for a term of 1/118 through 12/3120 in the amount of four hundred, eighty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars.
Support.
Excuse me. Man. Discussion.
Roll call.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitout.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Affirmative.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item K, the Health Department Manning Table.
I'd move to approve the Health Department request to approve the revision of the nurse-practitioner position in the family planning program from part-time to full-time. The part-time public health nurse to full-time, and to add a full-time health educator position to the Manning Table.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm gonna turn this over to Commissioner Greitout. I'm dying over here, so.
All right. Item, item L, the agreement for IT service between the Sheriff's Office in Oakland County for Clemis.
I would move to approve the agreement for IT services between St. Clair County Sheriff's Office and Oakland County for the Clemis system for a five-year term to name Kerry Hepting Administrator Control as authorized signatory.
Support. Okay, motion support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Temporary Chair, Greitout.
Yes.
Item M, agreement for IT services between Central Dispatch and Oakland County for Clemis. I am going to make the motion that...
This time, I'd like to move to approve the agreement for IT services between St. Clair County, Central Dispatch, and Oakland County for the Clemis system for a five-year term, and to name Kerry Hepting Administrator Controller as the authorized signatory.
Support.
Do we need a... Roll call, ladies.
Give him a second.
Yes, McCall.
Any discussion?
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Bone.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Temporary Chair, Greitout.
Yes.
Item N, contract approval request, Aramark Correctional Services Service Contract.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the inmate food service contract for the Sheriff's Office and Intervention Center with Aramark Correctional Services Limited Liability Corporation for term of 1/118 through 12/31/2022.
Support.
Okay, I have motion support. Discussion. I see that Captain Bliss is in the audience, if anybody has any questions for this. Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Chairman Greitout.
Yes.
Item O, 2018 Dispatch Training Funds Application.
I would move to approve the application for the 2018 Dispatch Training Funds Grant.
Support.
Okay, I've got both Tim and Tina in the audience, if there are any questions or discussion from board members.
You might as well get up and say something.
Hi.
That's perfect.
Tina, can you match that? Hi, I'm good. Okay, we're good. All right. Do we need a roll on this one?
No.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item P, contract approval request, Aramark Correction Services Commissary Services Agreement.
I would move to approve the commissary service agreement with Aramark Correction Services for a five-year term expiring February 28th, 2023, for the Intervention Center.
Support.
Okay, I'm motion two supports. Any discussion? Questions? Again, Captain Bliss is here, if there are any. Nothing? Okay, let's do a roll call on this, please.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
All right.
Temporary Chair, Greitout.
Yes.
That concludes most of the new business. Let's go to the administrators' report.
I would like to remind the board that we still have a vacancy for a citizen-at-large for the retirement board. We do occasionally have issues having a quorum, so we are looking to get that filled as quickly as possible, if anybody knows anyone that would be interested. It can be any district, just a citizen that wants to serve on the county's retirement board.
Carrie, you need, you're looking for somebody that has what kind of experience? You're looking for investment experience, financial experience? What are you looking?
Yes, ideally, it would be somebody with some financial and investment experience, because they do sit on the pension board to help direct and make decisions on the county's pension funds and how they are invested. So ideally, we would want someone with some investment knowledge.
Third Tuesday, eight o'clock in the morning.
Yes.
Eight till ten... Eight till ten.
I'm sorry, say that again, Ray?
Third Tuesday of the month, eight o'clock in the morning. We meet across the hall.
All right.
The EDAs semi-annual meeting will be on February 12th at noon, and it is at the Convention Center. I believe all of you have received invitations. If you could please let Kelly Gardner in our office know she can get anyone registered who is interested in attending.
What time was that again, Carrie?
February the 12th at noon. Let's see. We already talked about animal control. The county is currently working on revising our indigent defense plan. Our initial plan we submitted was denied at the state level, because we included costs for the additional costs of prosecution. Seven counties did include those costs, because they felt it was, the standards would cost an increase. So the state did deny all of those plans, so we are currently working on revising it, and we will be resubmitting to the state within the next thirty days.
Carrie, the increase in what's gonna happen is gonna be picked up at this time by the state, supposedly.
Yes.
I mean, that's what, that's what the talk is.
Yep.
But it's only for, this isn't gonna start until 2019.
Well, that, once they accept our plan, we do not have to implement or comply with any of it until they allocate funding. So there is nothing currently in the state's budget. I think it's the Indigent Defense Council's plan or assumption that the state will allocate funds in their 19 budget. So at that point, once the funds are allocated, then we would have to start to move forward with some of our construction projects and the different items in the initial plan.
But there's a good chance that that money is gonna then disappear from the dollar standpoint, right? I mean, as far as doing our physical changes, that's gonna be taken care of.
Right.
But when we increase the rates from where they're at today, right, if they go up thirty, forty dollars an hour or something, we could be stuck eating that cost in 2020, 21.
Well, the increased rate is in the second set of standards, which have not been implemented yet. Those are set to be approved in May of this year, and then we would have to submit a plan for round two of standards that would be due in November. And then I'm guessing it would lag a year behind again on compliance. Certainly, the fear with all governments is they allocate funding in year one, we incur all these additional operating costs, and then the funding goes away. From what I understand, we have to resubmit every year for funding, so we will have to continue to reapply for these funds every year. And, you know, as the legislation or as the rules are written right now, if the state does not fund it, we do not have to provide those additional services.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yeah, at this time, is this gonna be brought to the board in May of this year?
For the boards...
I've got two questions.
Well, the initial plan was put on your consent agenda or for information only, and then, once the second plan goes through, that would come for you as well, the same way. It doesn't require formal board action to submit the plan?
Okay. Is there gonna be any additional employees hired at the county for this action?
Yes, potentially. If the state approves our plan, we are suggesting that additional staff would be necessary to comply, but that is something that would come before you is a Manning Table change before the staff is hired.
That would come before, if there's gonna be any additional employees?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Okay. One full-time, by the looks of things.
One full-time, potentially two full-time. You know, we've, since our initial plan was not approved, we're kind of just digging deeper in all the other things to make sure we have everything in there, so I think we're looking at potentially two new staff members. St. Clair County is scheduled to be featured in Cranes again, and that edition will come out the week of February 12th. As part of that, Cranes is hosting a Cranes Next live event on February 15th, and that will be at 9:30 at our Convention Center. That also requires individuals to register for it, so anyone that is interested in attending, and I would certainly encourage you all to do so, to show our support, please let us know, and we'll get everybody registered for that as well.